Excited to have you both.
All right, Harry.
Excited to be here.
We all ready? All right, I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Thursday, March 5th, 2020. First of all, is there anyone here to speak to anything that's not on the agenda? All right, moving right along, we have Planning Board minutes. First of all, we have two new Planning Board members, so we've got Brenda and Austin. Welcome. Thank you for stepping up. You're gonna love this. And we have Zoe, a new Planning Board Clerk. Thank you for coming. This is great. All right, so let's make our way through these minutes. Everybody have a chance to look them over?
Yep.
And of course, if you weren't in attendance, you don't get to vote. So Brenda and Austin, you can just listen. August 6th, 2019.
Do you want to do them in bulk, or do you want to do them individually?
I think individually, because I have a couple comments.
Okay.
Perfect. So August 6th, 2019, anybody have any?
Nope.
Changes?
I'm motion to approve the minutes from August 6th, 2019.
Seconded.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, and Brandon and Austin abstaining. All right, September 3rd, 2019.
I have a question on these.
Okay.
So when it gets down to, so on the first item for the October company, there's some findings, and there's empty, there's empty numbers. So on the second page, it says JBT and board review factors by bylaws findings, and then there's empty numbers, and then some of them have just like three to five. Yeah, three is negative five, or maybe it's three to five. I think maybe it's just three to five, but, and then the third page does a one with nothing, and I'm just wondering, is it intentionally empty? Because there was nothing to comment on for that?
Nowhere, so just, so September 3rd, page one.
September 3rd, page two. Page two.
Starting at the very bottom.
Item one is empty. And then on page three, item one is empty again. And I'm just wondering, is it intentionally blank, or is it something that, because there was no finding, or no issue with that?
I think we're going through the bylaw, right?
We were.
With the numbered findings, so there should have been something.
Maybe, maybe no concern or something, or nothing to add, or NA. I'm just wondering what should be, if anything should be there.
Do you have any idea, Jeff?
But can I see on yours, because I?
Absolutely, this is for September 3rd.
Yep.
So when we get down to the findings, it's a one, it's just empty.
Yeah, see, that's what was interesting, is that.
Even the three to five. Is it three to five, or three negative five?
It looks like three negative five, it's a period in there, but I think it's just like three to five.
See, because, um, they, I have a different version. It's not ideal since September 3rd.
Recommend that we postpone, excuse me, postpone.
Yeah, let's, um, let's. All right, so we'll hold off on the September 3rd now.
Okay.
Uh, October 15th.
I'm motion to approve the minutes from October 15th.
I cannot second it.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and abstaining is Chris, Brenda, and Austin. All right, Tuesday, November 12th.
I'm motion to approve the minutes from Tuesday, November 12th.
I'll second it.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and I am abstaining on that one. Motion to Brenda and Austin. And finally, November 26th, 2019.
I have a very minor comment on this. The public comment is after the motion on this. I just think it needs, just to come, we can approve as commended, but.
All right, so can I get a motion with that?
I'm motion to approve the minutes from November 26th with the amendment.
Seconded.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and abstaining. All right. Thank you everyone for your patience on that one. Uh, moving on, we have an A and R, Jeff, is that right?
Correct.
I have that on my agenda, I have the map, or the diagram. What's the address for this?
It's, um, 118 Union Street, and 108 to 112 Union Street.
Okay, and can you identify yourself for the record, please?
Sure, my name is Emily Holmberg, Surveyor, Holmberg &amp; Howe. And we prepared this approval not required plan for Bernie and Matt Gall. What is happening here, it's for the Hurry Scurry Lot. For the benefit of it, we are proposing to transfer a small sliver of property from what's now the Union Payson condominium to the site next door, that's the Hurry Scurry Lot.
So there's parcel A, parcel B, and parcel C, is that right?
Correct.
And so parcel B is coming off of parcel C, and going on?
No, parcel B is coming off of.
A.
Parcel A and parcel B are one parcel right now.
Right, okay, so parcel B is going to be?
It's going to be combined with.
Parcel C?
Parcel C.
Okay.
And that'll give some frontage on Payson, is that correct?
Uh, well, the main thing is, it'll give us a little bit more frontage on Payson, slightly more on, um, Union. Uh, right now, we've gotten a variance from the ZBA for the side setbacks.
Okay.
But they want to, the proposal is to, and we'll be coming back here for the special permit with the full plans, proposals right now is to build a two-story and go further back, so we can get four residential units.
Gotcha.
On the, on the top, on the second floor. And so that means we have to widen in order to go back.
Okay, and so that's gonna give you, does it say 50 feet on Union Street?
Yeah, plus a small amount.
Uh, we'll have, we've got 50 feet frontage right now.
Yep.
Right, it's an extra.
And we're going over another 3.95.
Okay.
Which will put the building that the advanced auto is in at a 10-foot setback.
Okay.
Which is what the minimum required is. And then we will have, um, more side setback on the new building, on the 118 Union. It still won't meet the 10 feet, but there's no way we can do that.
Okay.
And we will have the.
Downtown business?
It's downtown business. Um, the minimum area is 5,000 square feet, so after this transfer, it will meet requirements for the area. It still will not meet the width at the setback, but it'll be.
But it won't be any worse.
It won't be any worse, it'll be better.
It's the frontage requirement there.
The frontage requirement is 50 feet.
50 in that area, to meet on Union side, but not on Payson side.
Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
Any comments, questions from planning?
There's the comment, which is that, you know, the applicant has been going through, this is an abnormal process, so it's a variance in special permit with the ZBA to sort of rectify those issues, and then the ZBA had requested the applicant to get this A and R approval, and then they're going back for the special permit, which is an exception, and then, uh, the applicant will come to the planning board for the use of the property. So these are a lot of dimensional issues, and then they're gonna come to the planning board for the use.
Yeah, the reconstruction requires a special permit from the ZBA. So we've got the variance, and the hearing for the special permit has been continued, hopefully till after tonight, that we get the endorsement.
But we get to see more of you, is what you're saying, you'll be back.
Yes, we'll be back.
Excellent, can't wait.
I motion, what are you gonna?
No, just saying good.
I motion to endorse the A and R for 118 Union Street. Seconded.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, all right.
I will sign those. While I'm signing those, we'll start, uh, continued public hearing for Holistic Industries, and we can update on where we are there.
Chris Wold, welcome back.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the new board members.
Thank you.
You're gonna love it.
You gotta keep saying that.
Since we last met, Mr. Shea, you don't mind if I, if I go on?
No, please, go on.
Uh, since we last met, um, Holistic has received a provisional license. Mr. Bag has a copy of the provisional license, uh, and today they got their CFO. Next is, uh, getting a special permit, and then they will be getting a provisional inspection, and after that, they get their, uh, their license and their final inspection, and then they'll be ready to go. So the buildout is complete.
Was there a letter to?
There was.
Oh. Do you mind, Jesse, if I?
No, please.
Okay.
I think that's the, I think.
Is that the different?
The, the.
Second, so it's not the same?
Right.
Okay, and you're talking about the provisional license? Okay. All right.
So I think what we have now is we have a draft decision, right? We addressed all these issues.
That's all right.
And we can go through it, it's in one second.
I have the draft for review here. You've had a chance to see, has he seen the draft? You've seen the draft?
I'm on page seven at, at the moment.
And may I just offer just a tad bit more just context? So, um, the, the applicant appeared before the planning board originally on November 12th, and presented all the plans and information, and then there were two continuations. While, um, so the way the zoning is structured is that, um, in order for the planning board to grant the special permit, the applicant has to have the provisional license issued from the Cannabis Control Commission. So those other two hearings were kind of, uh, a little bit waiting, and the, the board convened on January 12th, um, and reviewed parking and a couple other related matters, and then continued one more time to kind of wait until the provisional was issued, and now, um, the applicant has the provisional, and so the planning board has done all of its previous deliberations and discussions, um, which allowed me to kind of draft up the decision for the review by the board before potential vote, so that was a little context.
And I, I wanna thank you for doing that, because that little bit of informational that you gave there gave enough time, so that I didn't have to begin reading this.
Well done, nice stalling, everyone. So it, um, we've got a draft decision here. The real thing we need to go through for this is the findings and conditions, um, which starts on page three. So I will begin my public reading portion of the evening. So this is, uh, the special permit considerations, so number one is conformance with the provisions of the ordinances of the City of East Hampton, the general laws of Massachusetts, and all applicable rules and regulations of state and federal agencies. The proposed finding says, "The planning board finds that the applicant has received a provisional license from the Cannabis Control Commission dated February 8th, 2020, and the use is contingent upon the applicant securing final licensure prior to commencing operations." Anybody have anything?
Nope.
All right. Number two, "Protection of city amenities and abutting properties through the minimizing of any detrimental or offensive uses or destruction of unique or important natural, scenic, or historic features on the site." Post-finding says, "The planning board finds that the proposal."
Right, meets that need?
It does, and what, what I, ran out of time. I'd like to just say it verbally, and then just maybe have the planning board.
Yeah.
Potentially concur, but, you know, the, the, looking back, um, what I want to articulate, or propose to articulate here is that, um, last year, the applicant came before the board and secured a special permit under the medical marijuana provisions, and that is what allowed, um, the building to go under construction and get to the state it is now, and then the applicant came in to basically move their permit from the medical marijuana section of our ordinance to the adult use. So, so really, the, the building was.
Construction and buildout was really already approved.
Correct.
And we've already addressed those issues, it's really the change in the use, the expansion of the use to include the recreational.
Yes, exactly.
I think that's.
So what's the language we're putting in?
Someone was saying that it's not applicable, because the construction, this was already covered under the.
Right, so I think that the proposal has been previously reviewed by the planning board, um, and this is, you know, a, a use, um, change, so I think something along those lines would fulfill that.
Right.
And that, as, as constructed and as proposed, it doesn't.
That's where I'm looking for.
It doesn't have any detriment or offensive uses or destruction.
No, in fact, it improves it, with the rain garden and the additional.
Rain garden that was, that was positive, and actually improves the condition.
Improves the site.
So I think that's good, Jeff. I, I think it's actually worth making that same note, Jeff, on number one, too, as far as conformance with our city bylaws, that also, all the sort of structural stuff was already approved.
Is there a, is there a, um, is there a list of conditions that we could reference from the construction of the medical building? That would have these answers in them?
Well, that's a good question.
All the findings that we made?
The findings that we made when they originally built it for the medical.
We do have that. Could we consider the rest of this first?
Yes.
And see how it goes, because what, the conditions are now tied to a full plan set, so they submitted everything new in here, so the site plan was resubmitted, so we wanna tie the site plan and the interior buildout to this new set, so.
I agree.
I think that's good.
Make a good point, okay.
All right, number three, "Minimization of traffic and safety impacts of the proposed development on adjacent highways or roads, and maximizing the convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site. The proposal does not affect any unique natural or scenic features. Proposed finding states that the planning board finds that the applicant has provided a range of mitigation measures to minimize impacts to surrounding properties, including the provision to lease 20 additional parking spaces on the adjacent parcel, and assign a management plan to discourage customers from exiting onto Highland Avenue. The opening day plan includes provisions for use of paved police details on and off-site to direct patrons as needed." That's good.
Good, all right.
Is it?
Good.
Four, "Adequacy of methods of disposal of sewage and refuse on the drainage of surface and subsurface water, and adequate means of protecting wetlands, watersheds, aquifers, and well areas." Post-finding states that, "The planning board finds the Conservation Commission has issued a certificate of compliance on..." blank. We have that date, Jeff?
Um, I don't currently have it, but the date was in.
We, we know where to find that date.
January.
Or February.
February, yes, I can fill in the date, so it's just.
Okay, "Related to the site, parking, drainage, and other improvements, any cannabis-related waste will be handled by a licensed supplier, and other waste will be typical waste associated with a retail establishment."
By, with.
With, yeah.
Any comments, questions on that one?
No, other than, are we saying that he's going to put a date in there?
Yes.
Okay.
That date is what it is, they got a certificate of compliance, and we'll fill in the blanks.
Okay.
Number five, "Mitigation of adverse impacts on the city's resources, including the effect on the city's water supply and distribution systems, sewage collection and treatment systems, fire protection, and streets. Proposed finding states, "The planning board finds that no information has been submitted regarding any negative impacts to any of the city's resources listed under this provision." Looks good. Six, "Provisions for the off-street loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to the normal operation of the establishment, parking, lighting, and internal traffic controls. The planning board finds the proposal exceeds the number of parking space, minimum number of parking spaces required for the use. Specifically, the proposal provides 25 parking spaces..." I don't know, is there, Jeff? "Plus two handicapped accessible parking spaces," which exceeds the minimum required.
And I'm gonna look that number up now.
Okay.
You caught his second pluralization of spaces. It was subtle.
Space appears in there twice, that should be space size, but.
Yes, I caught that, yep.
"In addition, the board finds that the provision to lease 20 additional parking spaces on the adjacent property for staff and overflow parking will allow for the adequate handling of customer flow greater than..." I think that should be than, Jeff. "...may occur due to the novel nature of cannabis retail. The proposal includes provisions for lighting and security features around the building associated with product delivery protocol and procedures." Sound good?
Yep.
Seven, "Applicants' efforts to integrate the development into the existing landscape and design features such as vegetative buffers and retention of open space or agricultural land. Post-finding states, "The planning board finds the proposed landscaping is suitable and appropriate for this use situated within the highway business zoning district."
Yep, that's true.
Eight, "Minimization of the area over which existing vegetation is to be removed. Where tree removal is required, special attention is to be given to the planting of replacement trees." Post-finding states, "The planning board finds that minimal vegetation removal was required to incorporate the site, parking, and drainage features." Nine, do you agree with that, Chris?
Yeah, I would just say that there's, you know, replacement planting, uh, they did put replacement planting around the rain garden, so I don't know if we wanna add that to say that, you know, it talks about replacement vegetation.
I think that, that's good, I mean, it's, uh, he talks about replacement trees.
They say they're gonna do it.
But.
More hurt.
It's done already.
Yeah. Okay, you got that, Jeff?
Would you like to add a note?
That, uh, number eight, that, you know, the applicant has already planted replacement vegetation for the trees removed as part of the rain garden installation.
Fine.
Nine, "The consistency of the development with respect to setback area, placement of parking, architectural style, and landscaping of the surrounding buildings and development." Post-finding states, "The planning board finds that the renovated building conforms to all required setbacks and is generally consistent with the design of other buildings in the area." Ten, "Adequacy of the measures to prevent pollution of surface or groundwater to minimize erosion and sedimentation, and to minimize changes in groundwater levels, increased runoff, and potential for flooding. Post-finding states, "The planning board finds that the proposed drainage system for the expanded parking area has met all applicable stormwater permits, and the Conservation Commission granted a stormwater permit for the project." Eleven, "Adequacy of the methods to ensure the use will not constitute a nuisance by reason of unacceptable level of air or water pollution, excessive noise, or visually flagrant structures and accessories. Proposed finding states, "The planning board finds that the proposal provides systems for interior odor mitigation for transfer and storage of cannabis products. The reservation system and digital queue system is intended to prevent patron gathering on the exterior sidewalks."
There, this was from the previous application, so I guess, um, Mr. Seawald, you may ask a question of the applicant? In terms of, in one of our previous proposals, the planning board discussed potential odors within the facility, and I guess, I don't know if there is a need to consider odor of just regular cannabis products moving within a retail store. We, odor has largely been discussed in connection with cultivation, but interior.
Right, and I think we, first of all, and this is one of the things that was addressed in the medical, because that part hasn't really changed, the conversion of the use, what the cannabis is being sold for, but I do think we discussed the odor mitigation system that they have on site already.
So I guess that's a question in terms of interior HVAC or anything that you're aware of in the facility to process air?
I'm not aware of what the HVAC plan is, but I'm not aware also of zoning regulating interior air. I mean, the HVAC system is consistent with the building code, which of course can't be regulated by zoning, so I would, I would suggest that that would be outside of zoning.
And I think also the state, the CCC has requirements with respect to these facilities, that they can't, there can't be odor outside, so I think that, um, that issue's been covered probably, right? We've got.
I think 11 is good.
I have a question, um, I don't know if this qualifies as a visually flagrant structure or accessory, but we talked at the last meeting about a large sign on the side of the building, and there was discussion about how big that sign could be, is that, is that still happening? That kind of?
You know, we, we sort of put that on hold until we see what signage is going up, what the, because you sent us to the building inspector to deal with signs.
Yep.
That's gonna be the last sign, so we're gonna see what there is, and see if.
And that really is the building inspector's purview, so we can.
It's not really, yeah, I just didn't know if that was qualified, but if it doesn't.
It's not a primary interest here, so even if the board wanted to say that if you're gonna put that up, come back and show us what it's gonna look like, they would have no problem coming back to a meeting, I could bring it to a meeting and show it to you.
I think it's fine with the building inspector continuing to address the signage stuff.
Okay. And I think, um, I believe, there's a stab at a condition about signs complying with Section 10, reviewable, and so, I just wanna be clear, so the, the applicant has provided the concept for a mural, which is really, if you, I guess it's the south-facing wall.
Yes. What is it? Is it north?
I thought it was the north side, on the side of the parking lot?
Yeah, I think it's.
Yeah, it's the parking lot side.
See, I think it's actually in the, I believe it's on the other side, but.
We don't need to.
Right, there is a plan.
Let me pull out the sign.
So I think, I just wanna be clear that if it complies with the size, then it would be something that the building, the building commissioner could approve.
Yeah.
Because there is a rendering of it, um, and I tried to address that in the condition.
Okay, good. Okay, so, but just to be clear on 11, that last sentence does not apply to this application, right?
Correct.
That would not be part of our findings.
I would propose that the planning board finds that, um, for a retail establishment, is not anticipated to generate exterior odor.
As a part of?
Number 11.
Okay.
I mean, I think, I don't think it's gonna create a nuisance odor on the exterior, and I think that's.
And that the systems they have in place for their prior use and the requirements of the Cannabis Control Commission ensure that it'll be adequately.
Could it be, I just tossed this out there, could it be enough to strike the word interior?
Yeah, I don't know that the hearing is gonna be in there anyway.
And that sort of solves the problem?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah. Does that work for you, Jeff?
Yep.
Okay.
Mic dropped.
Nice work.
Good job.
All right, moving on to Section 10.10, "The considerations for adult-use cannabis establishment." Number one, "No cannabis establishment shall be located within 350 feet of pre-existing public or private school providing education in kindergarten or any grades 1 through 12, and operation at the time of application for a special permit or site plan approval. Distance shall be measured in a straight line from the nearest point of the property line in question to the nearest point of the property line where the marijuana establishment is or will be located. In any case where the measurement is determined to be in question, the planning board may require verification of distances by a registered land surveyor. Proposed finding states, "The planning board found that the proposed cannabis establishment is not within 350 feet of an existing school as defined in Section 10.10 or CMR 935-50110, Section 3."
Good job.
Two, "A cannabis establishment..." I, no one has any issues with that finding, right? Okay. "Cannabis establishment is permitted by special permit in highway business, downtown business, mixed-use mill-industrial, and industrial zoning districts, refer to Table 5.1. In the highway business district and downtown business district, any cannabis establishment other than retail must be located within an existing building and comply with the requirements of Section 10.5. The proposed finding states, "The establishment is located on a property situated in the highway business zoning district where the use is allowed with a special permit." Three, "Except in the mill-industrial and downtown business districts, no cannabis establishment shall be located within a building containing residential units..." That's in there twice, Jeff.
Yeah.
"...containing residential units including transient housing and group housing. Proposed finding states, "The property does not contain any buildings with residential dwelling units." Number four, "No more than six cannabis retailers shall be allowed within the city. Special permit applications will be considered in the order in which the planning department receives a completed special permit application and confirmation that a completed license application has been received by the commission." Post-finding states, "There are two requirements within this section. This application represents the fourth retail special permit granted in the city. The applicant has achieved both a complete application and a provisional license with the Cannabis Control Commission as identified in CMR 935-50102." Five, "No cannabis retailer shall be located within 200 feet of another cannabis retailer, except within the mill-industrial zone. Distance shall be measured by a straight line from the nearest point of the property line in question to the nearest point of the property line where the marijuana establishment is or will be located. Proposed finding states, "There are no other cannabis retail establishments within 200 feet of the subject property." Number six, "No cannabis shall be smoked, eaten, or otherwise consumed or ingested on the premises, except as may be allowed in a cannabis membership club. All cannabis establishments permitted under this section shall comply with all state and local laws, rules, and regulations governing the smoking of tobacco. Proposed finding states, "The proposal does not consider or nor allow consumption of cannabis on the premises. The proposal provides specific security measures intended to prevent any consumption of cannabis anywhere within the subject property." Seven, "Odor. No cannabis establishment shall allow the escape of noxious odors or gases. They shall incorporate odor control technology and provisions, and ensure that emissions do not violate MGL Chapter 111, Section 31(c.) Proposed finding states, "The planning board finds that as a retail-only use, minimal Proposed finding states the planning board finds that as a retail-only use, minimal odor mitigation measures are necessary. Number eight, signage. All signage shall comply with the requirements of 935 CMR 500 and section 10.0 of the zoning ordinance. Proposed finding states all signs comply with section 10.0 of the zoning ordinance. The proposed signs, including the potential mural, shall comply with the provisions of 935 CMR in that it does not contain any logos or designs that resemble marijuana. Yes, Jeff?
Between eight and nine, there's unnecessary space, Jeff.
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight. Thank you.
Number nine, hours. Cannabis retailers shall be open to the public no earlier than 10:00 a.m. and no later than 11:00 p.m. Proposed finding this special permit limits the hours of operation to 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., seven days per week. The hours of operation apply only to retail sales open to the public and are not intended to restrict other employees or operations. Ten, visual impact. Cannabis plants, products, and paraphernalia shall not be visible from outside the building in which the cannabis establishment is located and shall comply with the requirements of 935 CMR 500. No outside storage is permitted. Any artificial screen device erected to eliminate the view from the public way shall also be subject to a vegetative screen, and the board shall consider the surrounding landscape and view shed to determine if an artificial screen would be out of character with the neighborhood. Proposed finding states that the planning board finds that the proposal contains a retail dispensary where the interior of the premises will not be visible from the street. Eleven, home occupation. Not applicable here. Twelve, community host agreement. No special permit shall be granted without first having an executed community host agreement with the City of East Hampton. Proposed finding states the applicant has executed a community host agreement with the City of East Hampton as required under CMR 935-500-101b6 and has submitted the certification form to the Cannabis Control Commission. Number thirteen, community outreach meeting. No special permit application shall be deemed complete by the planning department until a community outreach meeting in accordance with 935 CMR 500 has occurred. Proposed finding is the applicant has held a community outreach meeting as required under CMR 935-500-101 and has submitted a proof form to the Cannabis Control Commission. Fourteen, state law. Cannabis establishment operations shall conform at all times to general laws, Chapter 94g, and regulations issued thereunder. Proposed finding states the planning board has conditioned the special permit on continuous licensure by the Cannabis Control Commission. Fifteen, license requirements. The applicant shall submit proof that the application to the CCC has been deemed complete pursuant to 935 CMR 500-102. Copies of the complete application to the extent legally allowed shall be provided as integral component of the application to the planning board, and no special permit application shall be deemed complete by the planning department until this information is provided. Proposed finding states the applicant has provided proof of a complete application by the Cannabis Control Commission. Is this supposed to be a new one, Jeff? Or is it broken up?
It's broken up.
Okay, so continuing on 15. No special permit shall be granted by the planning board to an applicant without the cannabis establishment first having been issued a provisional license from the commission pursuant to 935 CMR 500. Proposed finding states the applicant has provided a copy of the provisional license dated February 8, 2020 for retail sales. Continuing 15. No person shall operate a cannabis establishment without having a license in good standing from the commission. Proposed finding the applicant will require a final license from the CCC prior to operation. All local review and approvals will be required to be completed prior to opening.
Recommend an A, B, and C for those.
Well, or some of the ones we've done before, we just have all of the requirement language in a block up top and address all of them, but I think instead of just switching to italics, we can just do it top and bottom.
Just put all the provisions together and then all the findings separate, okay?
Yeah, in that section, that makes sense. Sixteen, energy use. All cannabis cultivators shall submit an energy use plan to the planning board to demonstrate best practices for energy conservation. The plan shall include an electrical system overview, proposed energy demand, ventilation system, and air quality, proposed water system and utility demand. Proposed finding states the planning board finds that this application is not applicable to a retail-only use. Seventeen, line queue plan. The applicant shall submit a line queue plan to ensure that the movement of pedestrian and/or vehicle traffic along the public right-of-way is will not be unreasonably obstructed. Proposed finding states the planning board finds the opening day plan provides adequate measures to control pedestrian and vehicular movement adjacent to the site, including but not limited to provisions for an online ordering to facilitate shorter visits. That does not apply here, Jeff, right? Or is there online ordering here? There is?
Okay, I'm thinking of the reservation system from the last one. Okay. The lobby is approximately 630 square feet, which will provide areas within the building to queue customers inside the building. In the event that a line of patrons occurs, the line would run adjacent to the front of the building and out of the pattern of traffic, and will be monitored by employees to maintain safety. Appointment-only retail sales for a minimum of the first-
That's not applicable.
That sentence should not, restrict that sentence.
In addition, the applicant has agreed to pay for police details on an as-needed basis. A condition of the special permit requires the planning board to review and approve the adequacy of the opening day plan at a public meeting after 60 days. Said meeting shall include notice to abutters mailed by the applicant in accordance with chapter 48, section 9.
Can I ask, after 60 days from what?
From opening day.
Opening day?
Yeah, and the majority of that section is a reiteration of their, of components of their opening day plan. This, the last sentence is highlighted because it's a question for the board. I believe that the previous application from which most of this, you know, was used as a template was the verb "absorb," which was a downtown situation, which had some characteristics which the planning board wanted to have a more detailed review.
Yep.
So there's a question of whether the board would want a abutters notification for a public meeting, and there's a condition later on that articulates that change in ownership is the particular discussion will come to the board at a public meeting, and one of the purposes is, one of the purposes of the public meeting is for this board to determine if any changes are significant enough. The board has the ability to approve minor changes without notification to all the abutters, and if there is a major, you know, change, you would then require them to modify the special permit, which triggers an abutters. So there's a question to whether the opening day plan should have abutters notices for your reason.
So I personally feel like I don't think that's necessarily something we need. I think that if people are having issues, they're gonna probably communicate with Jeff, and you can certainly raise that issue. I also, and it's still gonna be noticed as a public hearing, people will be able to see that it's on our agendas, but I don't feel strongly about that if other people feel like it.
Is there an issue of consistency? I definitely saw the need with the verb "absorb."
Yeah.
There was a lot of debate about it, and there was a very closely packed area that looked like a lot of businesses. Consistency would mandate, even though this is further spaced, it's in an area I think maybe just naturally we may all think needs this less. I mean, overall, I agree with you, it seems to need it less, but consistency and fairness, I think, needs to be upheld. What we do, for one, needs to be what we do.
I would tend to agree, especially because the Highland Avenue residential area, they might want to be informed of any, of the opening day plan, so, because it may impact them. So I think it's, I think an abutters notification is a good idea.
Mr. Seawald? I would just point out that, you know, every application in every situation is different, and there's no requirement of that kind of what we would call consistency, because this is a different application in a different circumstance. So I don't think it's inconsistent to say in one situation it's appropriate to notify the abutters, and in another situation it's not necessary, and I wouldn't think it was necessary here, because if there were problems, as the chair said, they'd be calling Jeff or they'd be calling the building inspector, who really would have jurisdiction to enforce any, any violation of the conditions, so.
And I do think, you know, I think the verb "absorb" posed like unique problems with abutters, and I think it was good that we put in sort of like heightened oversight, but I don't want to feel like every time we do that, we have to do that for everyone else just because we pushed the envelope a little farther. But Jeff-
I guess the only, to make this conversation complete, if the board is willing to turn to page eight and look at condition number four, it's the condition as reference there.
Yep.
So, you know, the approach that we've taken is that there's a operating and opening day plan that covers the first several months, because that's largely the most, that's the most difficult to understand what this will look like. So initially, you shall operate in accordance with the plan presumably approved tonight, including for the first 60 days of operation as proposed by the applicant. The said plan shall be reviewed by the planning board 60 days after opening, and then, you know, this is language that I'm not sure if this is the same language as verb "absorb," but what occurred to me is that I don't want to be the only person providing any input. So it says with input from chief of police and/or other relevant city officials, at which point an additional interim or final plan shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board for operations thereafter, so.
So the question is whether we want the applicant to notify all the abutters to come to that hearing or not?
In 60 days.
Yeah.
Not the actual opening day plan, because the opening day plan's already done.
They've already made that, we've incorporated that.
It's available to residents, it's just that after 60 days when we reevaluate the plan.
I think the public deserves to be notified when a reevaluation happens. Who pays for the abutters to be notified?
The applicant.
Now, for the abutters notification, the city will just absorb the postage costs.
So the city pays for it.
That's typically who pays for the abutters notification.
Well, this says, "notice to abutters mailed by the applicant."
Oh, never mind, that's good. Their applicant will pay for it.
I mean, that's the language.
Right in there.
That sounds like it makes more sense.
I would also point out that if you are going to be making substantial changes in either a new interim plan or a final plan, and they're significant enough, then you're going to have to give notice to the abutters, because you're gonna be making substantive, significant changes that would kick in the hearing requirements. This is just a, you know, a check-in, more of a check-in, and if there are significant changes needed, because the building inspector's reporting-
This really makes sense to me. I mean, wouldn't, if the public had input, they could possibly alert the planning board to the fact that some change was required that otherwise we might not find out about, because only they were aware of the problem that was seen. I think the public, I personally think the public needs to be in this.
Give it a shot.
Yeah, I mean, I-
Do you have any thoughts? Notice to abutters? Are you going along with?
I can see it some ways, I can see, you know, notify, in other words, I can't see it, because, I mean, I don't know.
Okay.
Do against you?
Doesn't matter to me.
No, I'm, I'm not taking this, I mean, I really am fine with that.
I'll add that you know-
I think that's fine to require notice.
It's tough. I hate putting onerous burdens on the applicant, and this is an industry, it's heavily overregulated, in my opinion. We helped write what these rules, and I still find them burdensome. I don't like it, but I think this is a case where it's fairly easy to notify the public, it's harmless, and in general, when you work together with the public, better things happen.
I agree.
All right, we'll do it.
We'll leave it as is then. Eighteen, traffic impact statement. Any cannabis establishment open to the general public shall submit a detailed traffic impact statement in accordance with section 7.4104. Proposed finding states a traffic impact statement prepared by McMane Associates dated, and Jeff will fill in the ad-
July 2018.
What was it?
July 2018.
Thank you.
Remember, it was submitted during the, the medical, the traffic engineer did both medical and-
Both medical and adult use, that's right.
Right at the same time.
The planning board finds pursuant to submitted study that the proposed use will create minor increases in vehicle trip ends, but will not adversely affect prevailing traffic conditions in the vicinity of the project. The board also found that to minimize traffic impacts and to better moderate patron activity, the approved opening plan and approved site plans include provision for 20 additional parking spaces on the adjacent property with signage and management to discourage customers from exiting onto Highland Avenue for at least the first 60 days of operations and additional measures thereafter. Nineteen, parking. Parking shall be in accordance with section 10.1 and table 10.3. Proposed finding states the planning board finds that the onsite parking meets the minimum requirements for the use. The board further finds that the applicant's lease of 20 additional spaces accessed by a gravel walkway will provide parking for staff and potential overflow parking. The board finds that the parking and sign plan will direct customers accessing the adjacent site to enter the end exit from Route 10 rather than Highland Ave. This arrangement would be subject to review as part of the opening day plan to ensure that all efforts are employed to discourage the use of Highland Ave for exiting customers. One of the items for the board to consider 60 days after opening is the need for additional leased parking on the adjacent property. Twenty, waivers. The applicant shall be required to submit specific information regarding any waivers from 935 CMR 500 granted by the commission. The planning board shall approve or disapprove said waivers based on the following commission criteria in 935 CMR 500. Proposed finding states that the planning board found that any waivers from the CCC should be reviewed and approved by the planning board during a public meeting. Twenty-one, notice of enforcement order. Within 24 hours of receipt of notice of it, a cannabis establishment shall file with the mayor, health agent, and the building commissioner any summary cease and desist order. That says cease and desist order twice. Quarantine order, suspension order, revocation order, order limiting sales, deficiency statement, plan of correction, notice of a hearing, notice of any other administrative process or legal action, denial of a license, denial of a renewal of a license, or final action issued by a state agency, including but not limited to the commission and Massachusetts Department of Public Health regarding the cannabis establishment, cannabis control commission license, or the Department of Public Health certificate of registration. Proposed finding states that the decision includes a condition requiring that the applicant shall provide notice to the city of any enforcement order issued by a state agency in accordance with section 10.10.7.12 of the zoning ordinance. Twenty-two, annual inspection. Any operating cannabis establishment within the city shall be inspected annually by the building inspector or their designees to ensure compliance with this section and with any conditions imposed by the planning board as a condition of the special permit approval. Proposed finding states the decision includes a condition requiring that the applicant shall coordinate and arrange an annual inspection with the building inspector each year. Said inspection should occur within a reasonable period of time of each anniversary of the first day of operation.
You're killing it.
All right.
Do you need oxygen?
No, I'm good, just push right through. Conditions. Proposed conditions. Number one, all interior and exterior improvements, including the parking and traffic management on the adjacent parcel, shall be constructed and maintained substantially in accordance with the approved plans prepared by heritage surveyors last revised on December 2, 2019, and shall be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. In any event that any exterior changes cannot be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, an alternative schedule shall be reviewed and approved by the board at a public meeting. Number two, the occupancy limits of the retail space shall be strictly enforced by the owner. In addition, the owner shall actively manage the exterior of the property and patrons to prevent the gathering, loitering, or line queuing on any public sidewalk. Number three.
Yes?
Prevent the gathering, loitering, or line queuing? Wouldn't we prevent gathering, loitering, or line queuing?
Uh, it doesn't matter. I think it could be either.
Whatever.
Is there technically a sidewalk there?
Yes.
Okay.
That side of the road?
Yeah, that side has a sidewalk.
You know, a lot of, some, several of these conditions are, have been applied to all of the-
Okay.
-special permits so far, and there is a public sidewalk, but I think in this, in this case-
It's a public right-of-way anyway, but yeah, okay.
Right, there's, there's more space in this property than the previous one.
Number three, any change in ownership which is subject to review and/or approval by the Cannabis Control Commission shall appear before the planning board prior to operations to review the existing conditions of the permit and compliance therewith, or changes thereto. The purpose of the public meeting shall be for the planning board to recognize the new ownership and determine if any changes is significant enough to require a modification of the special permit subject to a public hearing.
So is that, that's a condition that was discussed at the last hearing?
We talked about that, I think that's a good thing to be in there.
So it's generally covering the intent there?
Yep, absolutely.
Yes.
You know, one of the purposes, and we talked about this in, having done this in Amherst for years when Jeff was over there, is for the proposed purchaser to acknowledge the, and to sort of agree to abide by them or to request changes. So I think that, you know, maybe you want to put in there, just so it's clear if this ever gets sold, what, what you're expecting from the, from the proposed purchaser, just to acknowledge the requirements of this permit.
Well, I think if we call them in here to review that and recognize the new ownership and determine if there's any changes, if there aren't changes, we'll simply reiterate that they're still bound by what it currently is.
Right, yeah, I think we're close, so it's, you know, the-
The purpose of the public meeting shall be for the planning board to recognize the new ownership and maybe comma, determine if any changes are significant, are significant enough to require modification, and to-
Reaffirm the application of the special permit and its conditions to the new owner.
To the new owner, yeah.
That's very touchy-feely. I don't think it's necessary.
Well, I think, where I was suggesting is in the very first sentence, so, so the, we're trying to set the expectation that prior to operations, so the new owner shall-
Right.
-appear before the planning board prior to operations to acknowledge, instead of review.
Yep.
So acknowledge the existing conditions of the permitting, clients thereto, changes thereto.
All right, I like that.
All right.
All right, number four, cannabis establishment shall operate in accordance with an approved operating plan, opening plan for the management of patrons, parking, and security. Initially, the use shall operate in accordance with the plan approved on March 5, 2020, including for the first 60 days of operation as proposed by the applicant. Said plan shall be reviewed by the planning board 60 days after opening with input from the chief of police and/or other relevant city officials, at which point an additional interim and/or final plan shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board for operations thereafter. Five, any changes that significantly alter the general operation, significant changes to the interior floor plan, or changes that may significantly alter the nature of patron management shall be presented to the planning board at a public meeting. The purpose of the public meeting shall be for the planning board to determine if the change is significant enough to require a modification of the special permit subject to a public hearing. Six, the cannabis establishment shall not create a nuisance situation pursuant to the definition of nuisance under section 10.10.5.7 of the zoning ordinance. Seven, the special permit associated with the use is contingent upon continuous licensure by the Cannabis Control Commission. Eight, the hours of operation of the retail dispensary shall be from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., seven days per week. Nine, all signs shall comply with section 10.0 of the zoning ordinance. A-frame signs and temporary signs on the adjacent property shall not be calculated as part of the subject property. Ten, any waivers granted by the Cannabis Control Commission associated with the operation shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board prior to implementation, except for any waiver granted for the sale of marijuana products tested by the Department of Public Health rather than the Cannabis Control Commission. rather than the cannabis control commission. Eleven, the applicant shall provide notice to the city of any enforcement order issued by state agency in accordance with Section 10.10.7.11 of the zoning ordinance, and shall coordinate and arrange an annual inspection with the building inspector each year from the date of opening in accordance with Section 10.10.7.12.
Great.
Excellent.
Any questions from board members?
Nope.
Yeah, can I say something?
So this is exiting and coming onto that property from Highland Avenue. That garage right there, there's a hair salon in that, on that property, if I remember correctly. And there's also the tire outlet itself. And they have customers coming in and out of there all day long, along with people getting inspection stickers, plus you have people coming in and out of that hair salon. So somebody parked into that parking lot right there and they decided to leave, how is the police or anybody else going to know if there are persons visiting the cannabis place or one of the businesses that's already on the property?
I think they'll be trying to.
So how do you discover somebody when they're just there, when they're there getting business as far as the garage?
I think the idea is that mostly the adjacent lot will be for employees, but I also think that the idea in general is just that the traffic will be directed out to Route 10. So I don't think it's bad if it's a hair salon customer.
Well, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how you're going to tell the difference.
I don't think they're going to tell the difference, or try to. I think they will just try to direct as much traffic as possible out onto Route 10.
It's possible if there's police details for the first 60 days, however long they'll be there, they'll.
I go there all the time. You know, I know those guys in that garage. I go down to Quodavich to hang around.
Not the hair salon?
Not for a haircut.
I don't think anyone's going to accuse you of being a customer at the.
Right, you can still go out if you're getting tires.
But you might be directed to leave Route 10 instead of.
I'm just curious, are you going to, how are you going to figure out who's who? That's all. It's only, that's the only question I have. I mean, you got people coming out of there all day long.
I think we'll leave that to the police that work in the detail.
Yeah, enforcement.
I mean, you're going to let some guy with a cannabis not come out of there? Somebody's going to get a haircut or whatever. You're going to let them come out? I mean, you know, it's just.
I think the goal of it will be to direct as much traffic as possible, not on the Highland Ave, regardless of what you're there for. Any other comments or questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Applicant? All set?
May I?
Please. You may.
I motion to approve the special permit for Holistic Industries.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, and Brendan Austin have to abstain. So we are all set. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
All right. Moving right along.
Two left.
Walter Merrick seeking a special permit under Section 8.3 and 12.7 on Colonial Avenue. Is there anybody here for that applicant?
I'm not for the.
Oh, are you the applicant? Okay, so I was just going to read into the record. We received a request from the applicant tonight, from the applicant's attorney. I represent W. Merrick Incorporated, applicant for the above-referenced special permit application. I'm writing to request that the public hearing scheduled for this matter be continued until your meeting scheduled for April 7th, 2020. The basis for this request is that the legal status of Standish Way abutting the proposed project is uncertain at this time. The determination of that status is critical to a number of factors involved in the proposed project, to the degree that conducting the hearing at this time would not be productive. We are currently working with various departments in the city to clarify the legal status and its impact, if any, on the proposed development. We anticipate being in a position to better address the legal status after further consultation with city officials in the interim, and prepared to proceed in a more concrete fashion by the April 7th meeting. We appreciate your consideration of this matter. So I know we've got a pretty big crowd gathered here today. We generally try not to bump these things when a crowd comes out, but in this situation, I personally, I mean, it's hard to take public comment when we don't have a concrete application. We don't know all the details of what's being done, so the proposal is to move this to April 7th, so we can address it then. You have a question?
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Can you come?
Okay.
So just a question about the process, not about the actual application. Give it a shot. It's close enough.
I'm sure what you want me to say. Okay, Cheryl Messier, I live at 26 Plymouth Avenue, which would be right across the street from so-called Standish Way. Been there 35 years. Can we put in input to say what we feel why it shouldn't take place before you go further than this?
Yeah, so right now, we haven't even heard what the proposal is, and it sounds like there's some questions that may impact what that proposal will be based on the Standish Way, the legal status of it. So the way this works is, you know, we get a presentation from the applicant about the project that they want to do, and then we ask questions, and that may take multiple meetings. And we also take input and comments and questions from the public. So the way I foresee this going is that if we did agree to the continuance to April 7th, the applicant would come on the 7th and make their presentation for whatever the project would look like in that date.
We were getting new notices?
There won't be new abutters notices. You'll know today, anyone who's here today. The way these hearings move when they're continued is that the notice is that you're at this hearing. So everyone here now has noticed that this could potentially be about to move to the 7th. So that's why I was saying at the beginning, you know, we have these matters where large crowds come, and sometimes I feel like applicants might try to move it at the last minute to figure, you know, if we bump this off two weeks, maybe half the people won't come back, and we try not to let that happen. This is a legitimate issue and question that's come up, so I don't think there's any point in taking a public comment at this point or questions when the applicant doesn't even necessarily know what their project is going to look like based on this legal issue that's come up.
Okay.
All right, so I'm sorry that all these people came out, and well, question about the process?
Just tell us what relevant people to talk to or town government is about the project, so they can describe it more detail compared here.
So I'll say that, first of all, I would say your point of contact is probably Jeff Bag, city planner. People should call him every 15 minutes if they can. I think the issue, the reason this is getting continued, though, it sounds like, is that there may be some issues that change the project. So I would say that I don't think we really know what the project will look like on April 7th until the applicant either submits more information or comes on the 7th to explain it to us.
Just call the town office and ask to speak to.
You can ask to speak to Mr. Bag, and he will definitely share information if he has it.
This point is April 7th.
We haven't voted on that yet. Don't get ahead of us.
Hang in.
Yes, Mr. Bag.
Just in terms of some resources that, I just want to make sure some people know that there are some resources available before you contact them all. So I have been diligent about putting the application materials on the website. So it is important to distinguish between, it's important to note that there, this application material is put at the planning board webpage. So the current application as, you know, we understood it to be, is currently posted on the planning board's page, so you can access the current application online.
I tried that just earlier, and I could not find documentation. Can you get more detail to us?
Sure. If you look, if you find the planning board, they're, it's listed under 2020 applications.
Okay.
There's also a planning department webpage, right? So sometimes that's the confusion, so making sure you're going to. Yeah, so that can be another thing that catches you up, but I know, I looked at it today, so I know it's online there.
Under planning board.
Under planning board.
And what I wanted to ask the chair and the board is to ask the applicant to submit information by April 2nd. Any new information should be submitted with some amount of time in advance of the next meeting. And that's usually our standard kind of operating is five days prior. There's information available, and that's what my commitment would be, is if I have any new information, I would put it in that location five days prior to the continued date.
At the same time?
Yeah, we haven't voted on that yet, but yeah, I mean, our meetings are usually Tuesdays at 6:00, so.
And we can, and we can make our, if we make this motion, we can make sure that it's the first item on the agenda.
Yeah, that's what I would recommend.
Quick check on that, because I'm thinking the same. Jeff, do we have anything else known on the 7th?
No.
Easy peasy.
So we're good.
Do you mind if, you may have just done this and I missed it as I was zoning out there. The five-day thing that Jeff just put forward, is that going to be an issue?
That's acceptable.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. All right, I'll take a motion to continue then.
My motion to continue the special permit application for Merrick Incorporated. All right, is that?
It's Walter Merrick.
Walter Merrick Incorporated till April 7th at 6:00 p.m.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. All right. All right, so hopefully we'll see you all on the 7th. Thank you. Anything else that I'm not seeing on here, Jeff, or are we done? Any administrative matters or?
The only administrative matter would be the next scheduled meeting is March 17th. As of right now, there's no.
Folks, we're trying to wrap up the meeting here, so if you need to talk, if you could take it outside, that'd be great. Thank you.
As of right now, there's no business for the planning board on March 17th. So I think Jesse and I talked earlier that the thing that can happen is another A&R plan. They come in and the planning board does have to deal with them. So that would be the scenario, is that by the middle of next week, I should be able to know whether the planning board has any business, or we will notify you that the meeting may not be necessary.
Did you say March 17th?
Yes.
I definitely won't be able to make that meeting.
Good to know.
And will you be here, Harry, for it? Are you going down to Florida?
I'll be in Florida Sunday.
I will be earning my 14-day quarantine.
Nice. All right, so it might just be the four of us.
Not funny.
I know, right?
Well, I gotta bring up something.
Hold on, here, here, I have someone else.
Remember, you two guys have to go to those meetings, and I'm not going to be here.
Oh, that's right, we decided to postpone it to this meeting.
I'm not sure who's going where.
To figure out who's going to which meetings.
As long as it's not during.
The CPA is the third Thursday of the month.
And what was the other one? The?
Telecom.
Telecom. That's the first Monday of the month.
As long as it doesn't, I believe I mentioned the last time, overlap between the 16th and the 21st, I'd be happy.
What's a call for an A&R? Three?
Four.
Three.
Yeah.
Three for an A&R, four for a special.
Okay, so what'd you say CPA is third Thursday?
Third Thursday of the month.
So that's the 19th, and you're gone.
I'm gone.
When's the telecom meeting?
The first Monday of the month.
So you already got that covered, so that would be Monday, April 6th.
Right.
So it sounds like Chris gets CPA.
Yeah, I'm done with that, because I hate technology, so I don't want to do telecom.
All right, so let's just.
What's the date that the telecom, can you give it to me again? April 1st?
The first Monday of the month.
April 6th. And CPA is what?
It's Meeting Room A.
March 19th? I think that's what we did. We decided.
So let's just have a formal motion, because these are board appointees or designees for this, and we will make sure to get Harry right back in there when he gets back.
To fill in on April 6th for Harry at the telecom committee, and for Chris to fill in for the CPA on March 17th.
I'm sorry.
One at a time?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
A little louder.
I motion to fill in for Harry for the telecom committee on April 6th.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll let you take it.
I motion that I take over for Harry for the CPA meeting on March 19th. It's just that one, right?
So far.
Okay.
No, there'll be one in April.
Yeah, you're going to have to.
And April.
The third, whatever the April meeting is.
Third Thursday?
Yeah. What's, you got the calendar wrong? What's the third Thursday in May? I'll be back by then, hopefully.
Yeah, third Thursday, May is the 21st.
All right, I'm planning on being here for that planning board meeting, so I should be here.
All right, so just March 19th. Sweet.
No, 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 April 2.
April what?
April 16th. I just had it here. One, two, three, April 16th.
April 16th.
If they move the meetings, though, you still have to go to whatever the date is. It's not date-specific. I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Congratulations.
Anything else, Harry? Because that was going to slip through the cracks.